Alright, good evening everyone, I'd like to welcome you to the reaching board of education special meeting, 17, 2015. Would that be a good place for you to come in?
Yep. Anthony Hamato?
Here.
Valerie Anderson? Alan Brown?
Here.
Gregory Cava?
I'm here.
I'm here. Michelle Bora?
Michelle is here.
She's here.
She was.
Emily Hibbard? James Hirschfield?
Yes.
Rose Prance?
Here.
Jennifer Foudy?
Here.
Michael Sinatra? Peter Tagley?
Here.
Alright, so Valerie, Emily, and Michael are absent. Thank you. We did this before at our workshop, but I'd like to pick up and welcome our newest member, Rose Prance from Rochesteri. Alexa from Tom Rochesteri, welcome Rose. Although we had invited Representative Arthur O'Neil to tonight's meeting, unfortunately he was unable to attend. Dr. Casantino would like to have a brief word.
I just want to say, welcome back everyone. This is really our first official meeting. But I did give the board the agenda for our PD days, I gave it to you before. And I just wanted to point out that on Monday at 8:15, all the teachers report, we do have a speaker. Her name is Joyce Saltzman, she's a special educator from Southern. She presents on humor. She's fabulous. She's wonderful. And anybody in the audience who wants to come hear her, she really is wonderful. She'll be here 8:15 on Monday in the Shapav Auditorium, so if you can come, that would be wonderful. And if you're there, just let us know so we can introduce you. And again, anyone in the audience who'd like to come, we'd love to have you. We haven't had a guest speaker here since I've been here, but I think she's gonna be wonderful. So, I just wanted to say that.
Alright, so that's Monday morning, the superintendent's convocation with staff. Next item, public comment. Is there anyone who'd like to comment on the agenda item at the time? Just identify yourself, go to the podium please.
Are you gonna go up there?
Yes, sir. What town you're from, please?
My name is Ed Wainwright, I'm from Bridgewater. It's okay? It's alright to talk here? I have two questions. When will the bonding be available? And when will the business case be available?
Well, Mr. Wainwright, I know that you were, I don't wanna engage in a dialogue with you, that's not the purpose of public comment. But you were at the workshop that we just had with department subjects, neither one of those at the time is fixed at this moment. We're working on them, and as soon as they are available, they will be available.
You don't have a date right now?
No, we don't. Anyone else? Do you have your addresses? Alright, seeing no one else, and we'll move on to item three. Dr. Casantino?
Yes, we have here tonight Charlie Boos from Castle Boos and his staff members, which he will introduce to go over the progress of the Shapav Valley Regional Agroscience STEM Academy. And Charlie, take it away.
Thank you. Let's go off, we'll do the introductions. We have Jennifer Monjali, the project architect for the project. And we have Brennan White, our landscape architect and site planner. And this is Mr. Brian Holmes, I'm sorry. Brian is from ONG Industries, who's been looking at the budget. And that's what we'll be looking at a little bit later on.
Go ahead, thank you.
This is some renditions that we did. The first rendition is of the entryway. Actually, these are three renditions of the entryway from different aspects. Where we have the new administration building, and the sales office, and new classroom and labs behind it. This is a bird's eye view, seeing the main entrance to the building at this point in time. And a secondary entrance to sales, and the greenhouses behind that. And just another view looking towards the main entrance.
I'm sorry, can you just tell us, show us again where the current entrance is, the front door here?
The current entrance is not available. If you're talking about the entrance right out the front?
Yes.
That is all the way around the side. This is at the extreme north end of the building.
Okay, alright.
Just beyond the pool. Brennan?
Hello, good evening. Good evening.
Come on.
Good evening, Brennan White, Castle Boos Landscape Architect.
Can you speak up, please? Thank you. I don't know. That's not working, but nice and loud.
Alright, good evening, Brennan White, Castle Boos Landscape Architect. As you just saw in the images, Chuck pointed out, we've really achieved this. So, we've actually received some wonderful input thus far. To really come up with a great concept that maximizes this site and its full potential. The images that Chuck was just pointing out was of the agri-science addition to the north side of the building. The demonstration building for large animals, as well as the equestrian building. This grouping really reflects an agricultural sense. It really communicates well with the existing building. And provides safe pedestrian access to each building for educational purposes. As you can see, the parking, we've distributed it throughout the site. Overall, we've increased the number of parking spaces, as one would expect. There's a great demand.
Can you show us specifically where the parking is?
Absolutely. The current parking, the majority of the parking, as you come up the main entrance drive, is in this location. Overall, currently today on the site, there are around 244 spaces. We've distributed them throughout the site. Right now, there's proposed 222 spaces, sorry, 122 spaces in this location. Which will serve the addition, as well as the two agricultural, the demonstration building and the equine building. There's also a considerable amount of parking that's located in between. Which allows for, I think there's around 25 or so spaces for the different events that might occur on the weekends. So, you know, the main entrance, as you all know, you parked out there. There's very limited parking out front, today. We've increased the number of parking spaces to 168 spaces. This parking lot will be tiered, as it slopes down, there'll be a retaining wall on the outer side, in the embankment. Bus drop-off is separated from parent drop-off. Buses will come up here, loop around, and exit out, staying separate from the majority of the parking. Parent drop-off is located within this area. On approach, you'll come up and receive a wonderful view, such as the one that Chuck had just pointed out in the first rendering. Essentially coming into, a picture coming into an orchard with a, say a stone wall out along the edge of the road. Very, wonderful entrance and greeting. So, the drop-off is right here. There'd be some additional parking for what we anticipate is retail in this location. Greenhouses are located right here. And seasonal expansion parking, as needed during the school year could serve as, in this particular lot, could serve as faculty and staff parking. As one would imagine, coming to this cluster of buildings, looking out, almost picture looking out across the pond to what would be the riding ring. You might catch a nice reflection off the pond, of a nice white fenced-in riding ring. And beyond that, captioned some of the pastoral sense, a large turnout area for the horses. Now, to touch on the athletic facility, would be reorienting some of the fields to more appropriate or maximize the orientation of the fields for a better orientation. Basically, turning the baseball field to a northeast orientation. These are two field hockey fields, which are essentially in the same location. This particular one, which overlaps the baseball field, has an optimum orientation. And because of some of the development, this particular field, which is also in this orientation, will remain. Overall, we've increased, basically, we've matched the same number of fields that are out there today. We've increased the size of a soccer practice field on the upper field area. We'll do this by regrading. Because of the limited area, we'll have to push out on the slope and create a more leveled area. The existing track and soccer field will remain as it is today. In addition to that, obviously, because we are building this location, which the existing tennis courts are right about here. They'll be actually relocated to the south side of the building. Four courts with additional parking, and access off the bus loop, which this particular parking area could be used for after-school use. If public wants to come and play tennis, they can park right in this lot. At this point, I'll hand this over to Jennifer, if she can speak about the additions and upgrades.
I'd just like to add one thing. We have the service road that presently is on the west side of the pond, which would be out here. That has been turned around, and it's now on the east side of the pond, and we go down to a garage. And this garage handles a lot of the equipment that is used by the BOAG people. And we also have solved the problem of the large trucks coming in to service the cafeteria with an easy way for them to turn that vehicle around. Thank you. Jennifer Monjali?
So, I'm going to review first where the addition is, which is over here, on the north side of the existing building. This is the addition which is connected through a corridor separating it from the existing area. In that addition, our entry area is here. You can enter, and there's administrative block. And then labs across from classrooms, a food science lab, plant science classroom. And then all of our plant science type program areas are up in that area. There's greenhouses, the headhouse, which is the support facilities for the greenhouses. And acting as a lab for the plant science program. And this is a section showing how we intend to perhaps get some light into these spaces through the classrooms. It's through this area. Next, we do need to renovate some of the existing building in order to capture some space. It really is underutilized now, in the current shop and industrial arts types of spaces. We're going to take over those areas for agricultural shop and an aquaculture shop area, in all of their support spaces. Leading out those doors would look right across to the addition. So, they're in close proximity, just down the connecting hallway. This is the animal facility, which is a separate facility located on the site. I'll go back for a moment. The animal facility is located across from the addition. And the equine facility, which I'll also go over next, is also located across to the west of the addition. The animal facility houses both large animals, such as sheep, goats, pigs. Those animals are out here and have pens adjacent to the building, where there can be observation and, you know, letting the animals outside, outdoors. There's a large demonstration classroom that connects that area, so they could bring some large animals into the demonstration classroom. Have some observation there, and teaching opportunities. And then on the other side of the demonstration classroom are small animals, which would be dogs, could be ferrets, smaller animals that are also part of the animal science program, as well as grooming. There's dog grooming that happens too, there's an area for that. And dog grooming kennels. This could also be used as a program space, not only for teaching during the normal school day, but also a community use, in that the students can learn by interaction with the community and taking care of animals, grooming onsite there as well. The equine facility is a large indoor riding area, adjacent to a number of horse stalls. And then all of their support spaces for feed and for bedding for these animals. There is also a classroom adjacent to the indoor riding area, so there could be observation and teaching that goes on, more like a lecture type of instruction that can go on in that space, in administrative area. Also on this slide is the equipment garage, which Chuck mentioned previously. The equipment garage is another separate building, which has access off of the service road. And that will house agricultural type of equipment, tractors and lawn equipment to take care of the grounds. Will be used by not only the agri-science program, but I believe also can house some of the region's current lawn equipment and maintenance vehicles. There's also a bus associated with the agri-science program, which could be housed in this facility. So, there are high bay doors to bring in these larger pieces of equipment. Also, as a part of the project that we're proposing is science classroom renovation. The science classrooms are at the far end of the building, at the south side, opposite the addition. That's where the current science facilities are, and they are in much need of repair and renovation. They've aged quite a bit. So, this area renovates those existing science labs and provides proper support spaces for those areas. And this is a fly-through, that's the existing building, all gray. And we're leading up toward the entrance into the BOAG and the sales area with greenhouses. The connecting corridor is back that way, next to the existing building. High windows are bringing light into the spaces. And the types of spaces, the vernacular of bringing some of this agricultural feel, those types of building shapes and proportions. In the background, there is the equine building, and the stalls running alongside of that. And the animal building is over here. That's the animal facility. The pond is over here, and an outdoor riding area, and turnout for horses is in the back of the pond. There's the animal facility with outdoor pen area for animals. And a large riding area, again, under that roof. That's the equipment garage.
Hey, this is Brian Holmes from the ONG Industries, who helped with the budget estimates, that's before. Okay, you've seen the building, and I guess it's our job now to make it a reality for you. Looking at the building as it was, our estimating stuff, put together conceptual estimate. You see the bottom line there? If I could explain how we got there. Site work is a challenge on this job, definitely. We're looking at north of $10 million to do that site as it is showing at the moment. Could it be less than that? Certainly it could. You know, we hadn't had a lot of time to spend with Brennan here to go back and forth and try and rationalize what he's doing out there. Thirty-seven acres of disturbance out there, we measured as, is pretty much the whole area of the school. Could that be condensed? I'm sure it could in some way, to bring that back into some sort of normality. Unfortunately, with a site that size and a building so small, it's kind of all skewed with the numbers. The building's basically the agri-science addition, about $8 million. Equine facility about $5 million. Animal facility, $2.5 million. So, the construction cost is about $34 million. That's what we see. Soft cast of $4.2 million, and then contingency is an escalation. We're not entirely sure when you're doing this. We've added two years of escalation in there, plus a 10% contingency, that's the 7.5 million. So, you can see the bottom line, 45.8 is where we see, conceptually, where we are at the moment. But that doesn't mean that's what, obviously you're thinking of something a lot cheaper than that, a lot less expensive than that. I'm sure we can get it much closer to where you want to be, with some work with KBA.
The number there, as I read it, is 45.806?
Yep.
We've been approved at minimum for 80% reimbursement rate, so it says that we're looking at, which would be 30. Who knows? In that area, 80%, you might be looking for $10 or $11 million under these figures from the public. So, that, you know, net, on that basis.
Does this include the science?
Yes, it does.
Where is the science in that?
It's under the renovations, right there.
The noise represents 10,300 of that number.
So, in that particular area, the reimbursement would be less? Would be less.
Yes.
That renovation number, yeah, is 10,000 for the science, and the balance of that is the aquaculture and agricultural shop that's in those renovated lots.
But the agricultural, this 9,500 square foot of renovations, that's in the 80%.
That would be...
That would be reimbursed 80%. So, you've got a whole thing up there. Well, Jim, I just wanted to, I sat through the meeting, and we discussed what needed to be done to the plans. Charles, you and your team did a magnificent job in solving some vexing problems with the site that we were hoping to solve in terms of getting enough space for the animals, the turnout, the riding, and at the same time maximize our athletic fields. We didn't want to kill off the athletic fields. I think you've done a marvelous job in trying to tie all those pieces together. And most importantly, you put more parking in the front of the building, which is where we desperately need it. That's where people want to park. That's how they want to interface with the building. So, instead of trying to tell them where they need to go, we've sort of tried to accommodate the way people think about the existing buildings. I think you folks did a marvelous job.
Thank you, thank you Greg, but everyone should know that it really was a team effort.
That's why I said you and your team.
No question about it. We've visited a number of existing facilities. And the end of this week, we're going to Massachusetts to look at another facility. Just to be sure, we pick up everything that's good in these facilities, and leave out the stuff that's not so good. To make this project a real success. And where is he? I want to say a special thank you to Bill Davenport.
Oh, there he is. Is there anyone on the board who has any questions?
I do.
Yes.
On the athletic fields, are you using the latest technology on all these new fields? Which is that, I'm not gonna call it astroturf, but that material where you don't, you're not dealing with grass and turf?
Let me say, the answer is very simple. No. Only because, first of all, we're not touching this existing track or soccer field. And these are practice fields, and could they be artificial turf? They absolutely could be, but we're certainly fighting an uphill battle on the budget, so.
What about the tennis courts?
Tennis courts would be...
Brennan?
Brennan?
Brad? Yes. Yeah, what's the material? What do they, we've had lots of material used for the tennis court.
It would be asphalt with acrylic coating, so it would be very high-end.
It is now.
Now, do you, when you estimate a project like this, do you also estimate what it costs to maintain such a project of this magnitude? It's like 80,000 square feet, from what I can see. Am I correct, about 80,000 square?
It's about 70, not a big, 76,000 square.
And do you do estimates or estimates on what it costs to maintain? We have to factor in, somebody's gotta maintain all of that, so I presume that's our job. I tell you, I would rely on your expert, which is Donna Leary. Where is she? There he is? Who would help us on that, who has, you know, firsthand knowledge of all that. Now, as we go along, we will have some estimates based on energy conservation, yes. When it comes to actually maintaining the building on a daily basis, we don't do that. We're not qualified to do that. We're gonna put in finishes, working with the administration, finishes that they would like to see in the building. Okay, so that's for labor.
Anyone else? Is there any member of the public who has any questions? Yes, you just stand up. Tell us your name and town.
John Boniugo, Washington. Any idea how many animals? You mentioned horses, pigs, goats, cows. How many can this facility accommodate?
I need Bill's help on that.
Bill Davenport, for those who don't know, runs the program at Nonowog, and is very successful, very well-known. Bill, can you help us?
Sure, I mean, it...
And has been very helpful to us in this project.
The horse facility, I think there's six, the left, I think, I believe there's six stalls.
Seven, is there?
Okay. Alright, and then the other animal room, the other animal facility has eight different box stalls on the left. For smaller animals, pigs, and goats, so.
But there's no intention to keep those full all the time? On equine facility?
We care for all them, I...
Yeah, in Nonowog, we have similar, yeah, we have similar facilities. Not as good, but similar sizes on some of the animal rooms there. And we have, we employ students, weekends, vacations, to come in morning and night, feed animals, water plants, and the greenhouses.
It's part of their learning, it's part of the plan. And there's no intention to always have all of those stalls filled. Any equine facility, we might have eight horses, two horses. But when you have a horse show, you need a place to put those horses.
So, there will also be breeding, and little... Also, the bus drop-off, is that gonna remain the same?
Well, actually, no. Let me explain that. You're coming in exactly as you're coming in now. And then when you get down to the end of it, this is a bus-only lane now, and you have a turnaround here. So, the buses just go back out on the same lane. Parking for the public, they would come in here and circle around this parking lot, and go back out without any interference from the buses whatsoever. Now, the parent drop-off is up here, where they have access to the building. Here's the connecting link, and in they go.
Okay, and also with the field movement and the tennis court movement, the state will not cover those costs, right?
Well, I certainly can't speak for the state, but in all likelihood, a lot of this relocation is caused by program change. This is program. So the tennis courts were in the way, and certainly an argument can be made that we had to relocate them somewhere, because they were right in the way of the AgroScience facility, STEM Academy. So I can't, we can't guarantee any reimbursement, but the argument would be very good to say, well, this had to happen in order to support this program.
Okay, and what about the science renovation?
The science is used duly by both populations. And in all likelihood, I would say no. I mean, I can't...
It will not be subject to an 80% reimbursement rate. That work would be a lesser reimbursement rate, which would be determined by the state. Renovation.
Yes, sir, but then the other portion would have to be part of the renovation. Would that be an additional referendum, or would that be a separate line?
We haven't decided specifically, but it'll all be at the same time. All asked at the same time. Thank you, Mr. Davenport.
Thank you. I just would like to point out that it's sort of a catch-22, but it is impossible to predict what the final reimbursement will be. But certainly for the main body of the work, it'll be close to 80%.
Well, for the AgroScience, we expect for the AgroScience STEM project, a new construction, it will be a minimum of 80%. We will ask for higher than that, quite frankly, but we probably will not have an answer till the spring. But it'll be a minimum of 80% for the largest part of the project, by far. Anyone else? Got any questions?
Yeah. Are you far along enough in this to look at your energy expenses? I mean, you have a lot of square footage. You also have a lot of roof space. Or is that, that you haven't gotten there yet?
What kind of expenses are...
Energy and renewable energy opportunities, grants.
Well, I thought that I answered that question that Peter had. We will have an estimate for energy usage, there's no question about that. And we will, these buildings will have to have a green component. At this point in time, no doubt silver. Now, you know, there's not a lot of precedent for the equine center and the small and large animal demonstration building, as far as the state... I guess it's DAS now. Excuse me. Or exactly how much green energy we can use on those facilities, because they have, you have to move a tremendous amount of air. But the object is always energy conservation, always.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just had a technical question on the diagram that we were given of the site layout. There's a red line with arrows. I'm just wondering what it is. I don't know. I can't see if it's up there.
The red dashed line with arrows, right here, indicates pedestrian access. So that would allow people from the parking lot to travel to all the athletic fields.
So there's a sidewalk underneath the dotted line?
There is a sidewalk.
Okay, thank you.
Is there also just point of clarification? If you take that red arrow and you go to the left around the fields, is there a little path there, a walking path?
Yes.
Is that what that is, that the board has to be put in?
Yes.
Yes.
And I might, I just might point out that all fields, they all have to be accessible. That part of the accessibility route will have to be detailed on the documents.
The walking path that you had mentioned comes around the field?
It's great.
And loops back to the parking area?
It's great.
As Trucker mentioned, all the fields will be accessible. As you know, the site is very, there's a lot of topography out there. But that's our main goal, to make all the fields accessible. As well as, I touched on distributing parking across the site to the various entrances. Each of the parking areas will have accessible parking spaces.
Is there anyone else?
You mentioned retail.
Yes.
That would be plants and possibly eggs and vegetables and...
Yes.
We need more.
All we need are...
Is that existing and the other?
No, we have a whole conservatory entrance.
How about food that would be cafeteria?
We actually, we have a hydroponic greenhouse, which allows three, or at least one of them will be one. And we grow lettuce, herbs, all kinds of plants in that that we don't have enough to supply the 800 kids in our own. We have a week of eating the eggs, the harvest lettuce, eating salads, kind of things. So we're growing that, and creating house materials as well. And we're just starting over there, so this is a continuation.
Thank you, Greg.
Yeah, I just had one follow-up question. On this question, his previous question, which is, when you talk about energy uses, I would imagine that the new facilities, I recognize it's harder for the equine center because it's a massive air handling thing and it's basically a barn. But on the other classroom facilities, the greenhouse facilities, that whole thing, you're expecting the energy usage there to be significantly better than the energy usage on the existing one?
Yes.
I would take that you should be able to get a lot better use.
Well, let me just... Let me explain something about energy usage in an existing building. I'll take this one for instance. The air change code has been modified since the older buildings have been built. And one of the major costs in energy usage is you have to bring in so much more outside air. I believe we're up to 15 cubic feet per minute per occupant. And some of the older buildings might have been five. So when you make that comparison between the HVAC, it becomes a little bit skewed because the code has changed and we now have to put more air into the building and put more air in, more air out. Of course, we have recovery systems and all that, but the comparison is not... Because we have three times the amount of air coming in, it... Yeah, three times the amount of air coming in, we're not going to see that kind of saving.
On the HVAC?
On the HVAC. When it comes to the lighting systems, all of the lighting systems are improving energy usage exponentially. It's just like LED uses, et cetera. And the amount of power that we would use to run certain things also is not nearly as heavy usage as it once was.
All right, let me ask you one other question about this path that goes around the outside of the northern end of the site. Do you have any sense of how long that is, or how much you've been able to add, in terms of length? I don't know whether you can measure it.
It could be a quarter, I'd say quarter of a mile.
We can answer that question.
No, someone's going to ask me that, that question. Is there anyone else? All right, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Appreciate the opportunity. Before we break, I just, Bill Davenport is here. Bill, do you have anything that you want to add?
No, I don't think it's...
No, thanks. No one has any questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, Bill, there is a question for you. You wouldn't mind answering 4B?
Yes, I'm just anticipating.
I'm just curious about the catchment, how they're working. I understand we were having a previous meeting that had come up, a lot of them. And I've been confused about how it works. There were, there's a number of towns that were all going to Naukau. Now, they're being broken up into some, still going to Naukau, but some are going to... Last year or the next couple of years, you'll have a certain amount of applicants and there are only options to go to Naukau. And you have to turn away a certain number. Now, the confusion is that I thought that that certain number would no longer be turned away. They would come here. But of course, it's not that exact same population because some of those kids are going to be in our catchment and some are going to be in the Naukau catchment. But my question is, is it a close evening out? Because we've been trying to talk about predicting the number of students who will eventually come here. And it appears to me that it'll probably be very close because you'll still have the same number of people applying. You just won't be able to turn away as many from your new catchment district. And you'll be turning 100% away from our catchment district.
Right.
So am I mistaken here that there's a correlation? Or is it really too early to predict how it's going to work?
I guess it's, if you look at past history and look at recent history, it's pretty different. But for example, this current year, we had, I think it was 115, 118 applicants from all three towns. Forty-nine of them are from Region 12 and the seven towns that located up in the Bronx. So if you think about it that way, if we started this now, those 49 kids, as long as they're qualified applicants, which 99% of them are, would come here and the other students would come to ours. So we would probably still have a waiting list, you know, because we have 13 towns. And, you know, Naukau's a water town, is a big one. Oxford, Beacon Falls, you know, are our old side, too. But the important thing to understand is the Danbury area, there's like 860 eighth graders a year. I mean, the high school's 3,200 and growing. So there's a huge underserved population, which is really why we're looking for the last 10 years for a school in the western side of the catchment area to become the 20th Act Center so that we can go down and actually get more of those students. Because if you think about it, 860 kids, and they've actually created the Westside STEM Academy Middle School down there for these kind of kids, we're thinking of the STEM and the science. So that's already, you're already kind of grooming that kind of a kid into that one program. And then their next step is Danbury High School, is really the only choice they have. And we, this year, I think we had, I believe, nine or 10 applicants who went to that middle school, who then all of a sudden knew about us more in our coming art. So our numbers went up from Danbury since one year, since that school has gone, has become into existence. I think it was two years ago, they took an old elementary school and converted it to a third because they're growing so much, they need a little space. And they kind of concentrated out of Broadview and Rogers Park, the science STEM kind of curriculum for this high, for this middle school. So that's a natural feeding area to come into this kind of a program.
Simply put, what I want you to realize is, right now, without doing anything extra, without putting a shovel in the ground, there are 49 available kids in our catchment area, our proposed catchment area. That's before anybody hears about what we're building. That's before we do a more thorough job of recruitment, because Bill doesn't like to turn down so many kids. And that's before you add that this is an AgroScience STEM Academy. So that all of it is beyond those 49 kids.
Right. And the thing is that right now, when we go recruiting, we usually, I usually let the school kind of prescreen the kids and give me the 40 kids who may be interested, or 20 or whatever, instead of going in and talking to the eighth grader in assembly, like the MoTech schools do. Some schools have to do that, some schools just kind of prescreen and let me talk to a classroom of kids. But obviously, we'll be going to talk to every eighth grader because a lot of kids...
It should be a place for them.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
It's discouraging to have to do that.
Right, exactly. I don't want to have 300 applicants and say no to 200, you know. So definitely that can be kicked up to reach a lot of kids who maybe had heard that day and weren't prescreened by that guidance counselor to come in, although they want to be in the landscape of architect, don't even know what we offer, that kind of story. So I think the opportunities of growth are endless, especially in the Danbury and Fairfield area, too. And Ingleford's big, too.
Just to be clear, the data that I've seen so far doesn't quite line up with some of the numbers. So I just caution before we speak too definitively about numbers that we get the data and go through it first as a group and then report back out.
Okay, thanks. Peter? I'd like to ask, Bill, how do you handle... Basically, we're talking about importing students from the permanent education to fill your school and to add program and educational values. How do you handle the cultural aspect? How do you handle the cultural aspect of bringing students in? Maybe somewhere culturally different to the students that you have? Because every town has, all the towns have cultures. And some similar, there are some similar aspects to it and some not. Can you explain how you handle that, or is it even a problem?
It's never a problem. It's awesome for the kids. That's the best part about high schools, you have 23 towns where the kids coming in to go to comprehensive high school to learn specialty subject during their elective period, but they're all admitting English and math together. And the culture brings a Naukau, makes Naukau... Enhances completely. Kids that have never, would never have met, common interests come together. They're all motivated, dedicated to make it happen. They're on sports teams, they're in the play. I mean, they just become a Naukau high school student from Danbury, or Bethlehem, or Washington, anywhere else. It really adds to the culture of the school and is a win-win positive.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Three more questions.
That's it, John, three more.
Insurance, veterinary costs, and staff and the administration. Are we going to have to hire an administrator for that Go Act school exclusively?
John? He'll give you his opinion, but the answer is we're going to rest here, right? Just four of them will decide those. He certainly has the experience, so go ahead.
I'll just tell you what Naukau does. We have 360 students in the Act Corium as well. It's almost half the school. And we have 10 staff in the Act Corium. And I'm the director of the program, but I also teach three quarters of the day as well. So it's one of the, the teachers serve as the director, but they also teach.
Okay, and you would say we're going to have to hire 10 more staff?
No, you're not going to get to 300. You know, it's, the state has a regulation that's 35 students to one staff member. So all the Act Centers of the state abide by pretty close to 35 to one. And all of them have a teacher who is the director, but also department head, that also teaches.
So do you think, as far as insurance, would there be as good as all premiums based on chemicals, A, the animals?
Nothing worse, no, nothing actually immediate.
And veterinary?
It's going to be, it would be more because you're adding more to the facility, obviously.
Yes.
If you're trying to ensure a bigger piece of square footage, there will be a cost to it. It's just a question of getting the proper numbers to them, now that we've finally seen the overall square footage.
And your guns would be based on the difference between a regular school environment and...
From my experience, I was in Region 14 for 10 years and there was not a significant impact because you had animals versus just the square footage. It didn't really matter to them.
Is there anything else? Anyone? All right, is there a motion to adjourn on it? Oh, I'm sorry, Pat, I've got to see him on the station.
I just want to give the board the timeline of like the next two weeks. Board members, if you have any questions, I'll ask you to put them in writing to me and Greg Pava, who is the chairperson of the facility. So this way we can get them together on one list and start to answer them. And I also spoke to Charlie Booth and asked him to look at the site plan and look at the buildings and to see where he thought maybe we could save a little money. And then, once he has done that, hopefully next week, we can have a facilities meeting. And this way, the facilities committee can really look at the plans and send a recommendation to the board so that the board can approve plans with an estimated cost. Then we can start working on reimbursements, staffing numbers, all of that stuff. And we have a lot of different things going on. But, you know, we do want to get everything done, hopefully by the first week of September, so that this way we can move and get to bond council and everything else we need to do. So that's where we are. So if you have questions, if you send them all to us, we can put them together, get the right people to give you the answers, and then at the next meeting, go over them. But there definitely will be a facilities meeting next week with Charlie. And of course, all board members are invited to attend, but it is facilities meeting. And that's it, thank you.
Motion to adjourn? Done, thank you.